Recording in progress.
We could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, founded on the founding of the individual liberty of each man.
All right, I think we got timber around sitting here too. We'll call this meeting order at seven oh two P M. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Juan Crox.
Here.
And can you please state where you are, what city and state, and why you are via Zoom?
Yes, I am at two eight oh seven Canterbury, Trenton, Michigan, and I am not at the meeting tonight. I'm zooming for medical reasons.
Thank you. Benidetti?
Present.
Kiefer Watten?
Present.
Pate?
Here.
Prueji?
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rosetta?
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rosetta.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we get a motion to excuse Councilwoman Prueji?
To excuse Councilwoman Prueji.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And just before we get into it, good to hear from you, Councilwoman Juan Crox. Glad you're on, able to join us too.
Thank you so much.
Of course. We'll go on to the minute approval of the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. If we have a motion to approve.
So support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. Next up, we'll go right into our presentations and proclamations with our friends from Wayne Metro. If we could get a motion to make this part of the regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Feel free to take it away. Thank you.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Hiba Hades. I am the Community Engagement and Outreach Manager at Wayne Metro. Sorry, I'm pretty sure, short, so can't see over my laptop. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you. Wayne Metro Community Action Agency was founded in nineteen seventy-one. We service the low to moderate income residents throughout Wayne County to help address the most critical needs, receive over one hundred and thirty individual requests, one hundred and thirty thousand individual requests, and we participate and service all forty-three municipalities and townships. We do have seventy-five programs. The five main types of services include our Water Residential Assistance Program, our Michigan Energy Assistance Program, our Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, we have Head Start programs, and we service property tax and income tax. We have over twenty-one sites in Wayne County and fourteen Head Start locations. Our goal is to definitely ensure the greater quality, healthier homes, and thriving communities. So I like to start each presentation by our first line of contact. Our first line of contact is our Connect Center. Our office hours of operation are Monday through Friday from eight thirty A M. to five P M. And our hours of operation, non-office hours, our Connect Center office hours, are Monday through Friday from eight A M. to six P M., and then Saturdays from nine A M. to twelve P M. So when COVID happened, we had to relocate five hundred and plus staff to work from home. As we are a front-face agency and we wanted to serve the community, our work could not stop. So we had to do something that was client-focused. Yet, we can assess anyone, even if they don't walk into our offices and we can't see them face-to-face. So we launched our universal application. This application is a one-stop shop where clients can apply for several services within that one application. We limited the documents because we realized documents is such a barrier for clients. That way, so if clients needed assistance with water, they can check off the water box. If they need assistance with utility, they can check off the utility box, and that application can be expanded. And on the back end, it goes to certain departments and reassess them from that one application. The client also gets to create a username and password, where it tells you in real time where your application is in our queue. It tells you the status of application. It also tells you what documents are still needed, if it's pending, and what we're still requesting from those clients. We minimized our documents for almost all of our applications, so we require an applicant I D. for eighteen years or older as anyone in the household. We ask for a current utility bill. We ask for thirty days of income if they have so, and approved S E R. or any benefits that they received from the states if they received that as well. Our first program is our Water Residential Assistance Program, and the city of Trenton is participating in this program. This was, actually just went through a program design change. This is funded through the Great Lakes Water Authority. What this is, is a two-year program that provides funding to eligible low-income residents to assist with water bills, water conservation, and self-sufficiency initiatives. So clients can receive up to a hundred dollars in credits depending on their monthly income. And then they can also receive up to one thousand two hundred dollars in their past due amounts on their water bills. Again, it's a two-year program, and it's ongoing, supportive, like wraparound services where we assess those client needs. So we continue to check in with the clients, making sure that they're staying on top of their water bills. And then also, there's a home and water audit, minor plumbing repairs up to two thousand dollars, which I'll explain in a little bit. The RAP eligibility is, most of our programs follow a federal poverty level. So this one is at a two-hundred percent federal poverty level. So for example, a family of four can be making up to sixty thousand dollars and qualify for these services. Household income is recommended, but it's not mandatory. And why we recommend it is because we want to sustain those monthly bills that the clients are getting. And then if the client is, if the bill comes in stating resident, occupant, or tenant, all they have to provide is a lease and de-stating that they are responsible for the water bill. Here is a flyer of our Water Residential Assistance Program. As you can tell, all of our flyers are really client-centered, where we put the Q R. code, we put the federal poverty level, and we kind of put what the eligibility for each program is. So clients from the front face, before getting in, can get a picture of what this program is. So our conservation and home assessment. So for example, if a client comes to us and their bill is at three hundred dollars, and we realize that there's only one person in the household, that means something is going on in their home. So we have a minor, we have a, sorry, a conservation team that we set, we set them on a schedule with our conservation team. Our conservation team goes out and assesses into their homes. We check for those runny toilets, leaky faucets, and we make those minor plumbing repairs up to two thousand dollars for them, because we want to make sure if we're putting them in a program, they're able to sustain those monthly bills and not continue to pay three hundred dollars each month if there's only one person in the household. Our next program is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, which is referred to as LIWAP. This was a COVID-funded grant that is facilitated to stay until September of twenty twenty-three. So this is for, Trenton is opted in. Municipalities have to be opted into this program for residents to get this assistance. Luckily, Trenton is opted in, and this helps with past due amounts only. So clients can be receiving up to one thousand five hundred dollars past due amounts also in their water bill. On the back end, clients are allowed to get into both of our water programs if the client needs that. So we assess it, and we do the work for them so they can get the maximum out of assistance. We also have worked really closely with the state because we realize these bills are really high, and one thousand five hundred dollars is not enough. So we've been putting on a grant sheet, and the state has been accepting past due amounts up to seven thousand dollars and plus for clients with this funding. This is a restoration and discontinued service. So basically, if clients don't have running water, we can apply for this program, and we can restore their water under this program. The eligibility is at a hundred fifty percent federal poverty level, so it's a little bit lower than RAP. So a family of four can be receiving up to thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to receive this funding. Past due is required. Household income is not. I D. is also required for eighteen years and older, and then the client must be responsible for the water bill. And here is our Low Income Household Water Assistance Program flyer. I don't know what happened.
Can't make it too easy on you.
You were doing so good, right? Sorry, one second.
That's okay.
Gives me a chance to read. I apologize. It's, it's up.
That's okay.
Our next program is the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund. This was, this is referred to as MYHAF. This was established under the American Rescue Plan and designed to provide assistance with delinquent housing expenses to reduce foreclosures, loss of utilities, and displacements of the home who experienced COVID-nineteen hardships. So we did have a program that was helping with renters. That is over. That was the CERL. And now we are working with mortgage payments with the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. This is their application, but we're helping facilitating it for them. So clients can receive up to twenty-five thousand dollars in maximum assistance, and this can help with homeowner assistance, past due mortgage or property tax, past due land contract payments, past due mobile home payments, and then also past due utility payments. We have our tax preparation program. The tax preparation offers, Wayne Metro offers free year-round tax preparation services for Wayne County residents and surrounding communities. We help file taxes up to three years back. This is in-person or virtual options. The annual household income must be at sixty thousand dollars, and then online self-preparation tax services are available to individuals at any income level. We can also service any residents in Michigan. Next is our Regional Advisory Councils. So these are referred to as RAC. Our Community Advisory Boards to Wayne Metro are covering all of Wayne County, which is six regional RAC Advisory Councils. So what this means is basically we have different communities in Wayne County that come together, and there are voices in our community. So we bring together, where it's a virtual setting, where we meet virtual, and then we come with, we work with grassroots organizations, we work with police departments, firefighters, we work with council members, Wayne County commissioners, and so on. Basically, these voices come to our table. We let them know what we have in their communities, and they let us know what the need is. So my ask here today, for the city of Trenton, we would like a voice on our table. These Regional Advisory Councils meet six times a year. They are in a virtual setting. They are in a virtual setting. It happens about an hour. The meeting is held for an hour. Minimum is expected out of them. But this, again, it's just voices on the table to say what the need is for the community. Do they need water assistance? Do clients need energy assistance? Are you guys seeing a population of the homeless here that we need to assess? So anything like that where we participate and they become part of our Wayne Metro Board of Directors. So here is a map that really breaks down what the Regional Advisory Council is, what region Trenton would be in. Trenton actually falls in Region Six. And it shows on the map here who is in Region Six with Trenton. And I also made hard copies of these flyers as well that I can keep here as well. Next is the Wayne County, the Wayne Continuum of Care. So Wayne Metro is designed to be the continuum of care that leads, monitors, and provides technical assistance to over six agencies, nineteen programs, and forty municipalities in Wayne County. So what the COC is, is it's a response to end homelessness. We are actually the fastest-growing continuum of care for the state of Michigan. We just opened up our full facility in River Rouge to assess the homeless. So it's a shelter. It's a nighttime shelter. We're also partnered with our daytime shelter in Taylor for Christ's sake. So we assess those homeless and whoever is on our streets. There's a street outreach team that goes out and makes sure that everybody has a place to go to at the end of the day. They do go through our coordinated entry, of course. So these clients that are in need of a home have to go through our coordinated entry. When they go to our coordinated entry and they check off all of the boxes, they'll have a place to stay at the end of the day. Here is also a brochure of our continuum of care. And also, this is my next ask, is we have the same thing. So we meet, we meet throughout the year and we make sure that we have police officers and specifically, and firefighters and specifically, any first responders on our team that can come and assist and have that contact with our continuum of care department. So anyone that you are seeing here that needs a home, we will work together and put them into our systems. That concludes my presentation for today. I thank you guys for having me here. Wayne Metro is doing this for almost forty-three municipalities. We're going into forty-three municipalities and townships, giving our presentations and making sure that residents have our services at the forefront. We definitely want to be active in the community. We want to show that our services is available. If clients have a language barrier, if clients are not text savvy, we have a team of over eight hundred staff that can assist with that.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for being here. And does anyone from council have any questions or comments or anything? Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Hi there.
Hello.
So I have a question in regards to your conservation home assessment. We all know that there's so many scams going on. How do you combat that and make sure that you're reaching the residents that need the help and the whole process is safe and that they know that it's you coming to their homes? I have a, you know, huge worry about that.
Of course. So before, when they have to get into our program for us to even send out a conservation team to their home. So at that point, we have worked one-on-one with the municipality to make sure that this is their legit account. This is exactly what they owe and actually they do need help on their account. Now, as far as our end, for us to go into the homes, our staff reaches out to the client before they get to the home. They make sure the appointment is right. They make sure that's the client who applied for the services is at home the time of the appointment. And then we make sure we give the staff's information before coming out. And when the staff does go, we wear our badges. We wear our Wayne Metro gear to make sure that we're representing Wayne Metro properly.
As we do know that our senior citizens are huge targets for scammers and, you know, whenever they get wind of any type of legitimate programs doing something like this and working with the homeowner, you know, they get wind and then they start creating the scam. So I just wanted to ask you about that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you again very much. We really appreciate you coming out and all the work you guys do.
Thank you so much.
Cool. Thank you.
I do have flyers. Can I just leave them at the back?
Absolutely. Yep. We'll get them put up on our rack there, too.
Thank you.
For sure. Thank you very much for coming. All right. Next up, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment we have reserved exclusively for items on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for all other public comment at the close of the meeting. Ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begins with their name and address. Directs all questions through me and please limit their comments to five minutes. We'll go to anyone in person first and then those on the Zoom. If anyone on Zoom wished to speak, please use the raise hand function under either reactions or participants. Not seeing any for this portion. Move right on along here. Next up, we have under Authorities, Commissions, Boards, and Committees, resignation letter from Erin Castle from the Planning Commission. I'm asking Spidey to receive it, place it on file, and send Erin a letter thanking him.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Pate?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Maybe Scott can help me answer that. So Erin was the lead for that? Chairperson. Thank you for that word. Did they appoint a new chairperson in the meantime?
His, he just effectively resigned after.
Okay.
His last meeting was on, was it last Wednesday night? So, yeah, we've effectively accepted his resignation tonight. And then they'll work to appoint a new chairperson when they have their next meeting. It'll be one of their orders of business.
Yeah, thank you. And then did we appoint this Keith Rousseau the last time for that position? Or is there another empty position? There's empty. Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Of course. Yep. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Go to Department Heads and Officials. First up, we have from our Administrator, a request to advertise city facility janitorial services contract.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just like authorization to put out on BidNet and BidNet, the janitorial services for various city buildings throughout the city. Kevin, are no. Debbie has it. Yes. The bid packet. And it's, took quite a while to put this all together, but it takes into consideration what was in our previous bid, what was not getting and what was getting done in our previous bid and services. And all the department heads that it applies to have reviewed it and submitted their comments and suggestions. And everything was taken into consideration. So we'd like to get that posted so we can have a new or potentially, we'll at least have a new contract in place come mid-June.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up, City Controller. We have our Deputy Controller, Ms. Cooper here. Delinquent accounts to be placed on the 2023 city tax roll.
Good evening. In accordance with the city of Trenton city code, the attached lists are being submitted for action by the city council to place these delinquent accounts on the 2023 city tax roll. The total amounts representing each of the respective areas of delinquency are as follows. The water and sewer accounts is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and one cent. And the miscellaneous receivables come to ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. So upon approval, the report will be forwarded to the treasurer for inclusion on the city's tax roll.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
And then I guess I just want to add one thing now since we had the lovely presentation from Wayne Metro. We do have a few residents that participate in the programs, not a ton. I know last year we did send out the flyers for the programs for like the delinquent, the people that were receiving letters about their delinquent status to let them know the programs were available if they needed assistance. We did forget to include them this year, but anybody that called, we did suggest it to them to reach out. So we do try and help out where we can. We do have some of the flyers out in the lobby for customers, but.
Great. No, definitely appreciate that. Thank you very much, Jill. All right. Next up, we have from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent. Approval of a quote for the City Hall Door Access Control System.
Thanks, Mayor. The main entry doors at City Hall will be replaced in the next few weeks. Once installed, we have the ability to install a cloud-based access control system on all the doors at City Hall. This includes installing electronic strikes on all the doors and replacement of the card reader on the employee entrance door. A cloud controller and an eight-door controller board will be installed, giving us the capability to program the doors to automatically lock and unlock at set times. This app-based system can be controlled from a laptop, tablet, phone, or PC. This program data would be stored in the cloud. Therefore, if internet is lost, the program will still stay on track. Protected Access Security Systems is a family-owned business in Keego Harbor. They were referred to me by three local oxmoths as leader in door access security systems. The total cost for parts and labor is fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. There is also a forty-eight dollar a month fee for cloud access. If approved, funds for this purchase will be taken out of parks and facilities building maintenance.
So moved.
Support. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
So I just wanted to double check. So if we lose any power, everything's good. You can still access, open up the doors and everything, any internet loss, correct? I know I brought that in here somewhere.
Yes, I actually have Ryan from the company from Protected Access Security Systems on Zoom. He can probably help us with that answer. You there, Ryan?
For sure. As far as the power loss is concerned, the system does have a battery backup on it. And then as far as getting access to the system, assuming that there's backup power on the internet, that would allow for connectivity to it. But as long as the system is powered up, whether it's primary power or battery backup, the system will still function. You just won't be able to make any changes if there was no internet. So it would still function from a timing standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. And was that all you had, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next up, we have our dispersments and statements and then our reports. So I will defer to our Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Pate.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to, oh, sorry, I have. I don't think I can see everything that I'm supposed to be reading here. Yeah, so. Give me one second. I apologize. Okay, here we go. Like to, yeah, my phone.
You're good.
My laptop is not charged, so I'm trying to see it on my phone and it's cutting off what I need to read. So here we are. Moved to approve the authorized dispersments of May first, 2023 in the amount of five hundred thousand, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars and twenty cents.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you. I'd also like to move to approve the Cultural Commission minutes of March twenty-fifth, 2023, the Fire and Police Pension Board draft minutes, April nineteenth, 2023, and the Retiree Healthcare Benefit Plan draft minutes of April nineteenth, 2023.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
And I'd also like to make a motion to request a closed session after this meeting tonight to discuss contract negotiations and litigation.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Kebawatin?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Prueji? Oh, sorry, he's a episode. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rosetta?
Yes.
Bonkriks?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rosetta.
All right, thank you very much. Alrighty, had a couple things here and for other council business to get started. Want to give a big thank you to our Parks and Rec Department for both these events and then the Civic Commission for the City Awards Banquet two Saturdays ago that we had here along with the ICE Show that took place as well. Got, it was really good events for each one, a lot of volunteer effort that goes into that. And all told, in both instances, things where we get to recognize a lot of people who do really great things for our city. So definitely would encourage everyone to keep an eye out for both of those next year as well and then get submissions in as needed for the City Awards Banquet and all that fun stuff. But big shout out to each of them for all the work that went into all of that and all the good feedback that we got because of it. Wanted to let folks know, too, that this Thursday, starting at the lot in downtown Trenton, our farmer's markets kickoff downtowns from two to seven PM every Thursday. That's new as well. Where previously it had been every other week. That'll be now every Thursday with tons of cool vendors and local businesses that you can come out and support. So would encourage everyone to do that. And then lastly, need to give a really big thank you to our police department. Chief Oakley, Deputy Chief Davis, Officer Shaponyak in particular. I know that, well, I'm sure just about everyone watching has heard at this point. And I guess, you know, there's not really strong enough words that can tie it all together. But I think that after multiple now unfortunate threats that were made in our school district involving, you know, young students and things like that, or some of them probably going to learn some tough lessons, was just, I really want to commend them for being so on top of this, being able to provide comfort to, you know, kids, parents, staff, folks that are so, so concerned. And above all else, you know, taking it as seriously as it needed to be taken. And while also commending, you know, those who spoke up. Those things you kind of hear about too often where, you know, no one said anything or it was, you know, brushed off, shrugged off. It's really, really comforting. That is terrible of the situation, as the situation may be, that we not only did have, you know, kids that spoke up to make sure that, you know, we weren't one of those places on the news, but had the folks in our department, you know, both leading and acting on behalf of that to make sure that we had all the resources and attention that were absolutely needed to make sure everyone was safe. So thank you guys very much, both of you and certainly everyone in the department for that. It was not the most fun that I'm sure everyone ever had, to put it lightly. But we know that we're definitely in good hands throughout and I think really exemplified why these things need to be taken seriously. So I don't harp on that too much. That is all I have this evening. And so I think first tonight, for the rest of you, we have Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Oh, great. Hello, Mayor and everyone else. I just wanted to remind everyone that, let's see, Saturday, May thirteenth, before four, between four PM and ten PM, Kevin Hensley, he's one of our Trenton residents and he's also a veteran. And he's one of the four for the co-author of The Promise for the Burn Pits. And he's having like a sip and sign at the new city event venue center located on Van Horn Road. And he just wanted me to let everyone be aware of that. And they're honoring the authors and he would like to see everyone come out and support our veterans. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti?
Just a couple things, Mayor. Yeah, I do agree with the mayor that the police department did a great job. I know, you know, they took a beating with some of the comments people made. But when I talk to my grandson who goes to the middle school, he's like, I saw him, I saw him going through backpacks. They were doing what they're supposed to do. You know, we sit and hear about, well, you know, we need to be updated. Well, if they have to sit and update everybody on Facebook, they can't do what they're supposed to be doing. So people need to be patient. I mean, Trenton's always prided itself on taking care of the kids, the residents, and they will keep doing that. These guys do their job every day and I'm sure they're taking care of the issue. And I could probably add to it that even the kids that caused the problem have been talked to and probably even offered by some of these guys to talk to them and say, look, this is why it's wrong. They just don't go in and, hey, you did this, come on, you're going with us. I've seen these guys in action for thirty years, almost, and I think they do a great job and I really appreciate that, Chief. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. I was looking at the seats here. I did miss one. Councilwoman Bonkriks, not seeing you in your normal spot threw me off.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight. Everything's kind of been said that I was thinking, so I'm all set.
Good, good. Thank you, Councilwoman. Hope to see you very soon. Hope you're feeling well.
You will. Thank you.
Good. I like to hear that. All right.
Hi, yes, thank you. Yeah, and Timber, I hope you feel better so you can join us again shortly here in person.
Yes, thank you.
Of course, the weather's not that great for anyone to have to get out today, though. But hopefully that, you'll bring. Of course, the weather's not that great for anyone to have to get out today, though, but hopefully that, you'll bring the sunshine back with you. So I went to a Green Summit, SEMCOG was hosting this at the University of Michigan Dearborn. They have a brand-new tool out. It is called the Green Dashboard. And I'll be sharing that with mayor, council, and administration so that you can see how it is a useful tool. It's interesting that it has metrics especially for each individual city, including Trenton. It's only as good as we can update this information, but for example, I believe in our informational items, we're considered a Tree City USA, but those are different metrics I learned than what our actual tree canopy is. So the region has a target of 40% coverage for our southeast Michigan region and Trenton is currently at 23.4%. So just these little nuances and things that we can look at to see about, you know, making improvements toward this goal, maybe even though we think we have a lot of trees here in Trenton, maybe, you know, there is something we can do to reach a higher standard. And, you know, for me to be able to share these standards with you, I think is pretty important. It talks about the number of wetlands that we have and the potential for wetland restoration in our city. It gives us the total number of acres protected versus not protected. Households who are close enough within a 10-minute walk of parks, so even Parks and Rec can benefit from this information, although I think this metric is a little bit off. It says we have seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight households that are walkable 10 minutes within a park access. And it says we have seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven without. It's kind of interesting because there's seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight households in Trenton, so I think their metrics are awful a bit. But that would be great if, you know, our, you know, we're only, what, about 200 households off of walkable, you know, access to a park. That's incredible news for our Parks and Rec Department. Talks about stormwater, infrastructure, and so forth. So I encourage you to look at that email that I'll be sending out regarding that tool. I was able to put Trenton on the tree map and it's on my Facebook page if you'd like to see what that looks like. The mayor of Dearborn and the mayor of another city is kind of spearheading these metrics and so forth. So I'll be sharing all that information with you shortly. I also was on a call with Healthy Downriver, which is reorganizing a little bit outside of Corwell. Corwell is still going to be a member of that whole group, but Guidance Center is going to be the one taking up, running the meetings and organizing everybody. If there are any groups interested in joining a healthy, making, you know, Downriver healthier, or get the impression that we are, you know, please let me know and I can get you in on those Zoom meetings. One thing that I did learn is that we, Focus Hope attended this meeting and they gave us a flyer. I had no idea. We have a place right here in Riverview, Lincoln Park and River Rouge where people can get free access to food. Also Guidance Center is shared that they have a kindergarten readiness Zoom, which is free. They have an LGBTQ youth mini parenting conference on June 30th. So I did upload all these things to my Facebook page for you guys to take a look at. Speaking about Trail Town, we had a meeting last week. Tour de Tom is at a capacity of 59 registrants so far. We have room for 100 or maybe even a little bit more, so please get your registrations in. It is a donation to the Downriver Link Greenways and all that they do to support the trails. It is also Walk Bike Drive Safe and a commuter challenge, so we're trying to make it safer for people who are biking. And we have residents here today that continue to talk about the Grozeal Bridge being a tough spot to cross. And we're working toward making that safer, but it really comes down to the culture and, you know, I think maybe the Bird scooters helped us see that there are other forms of transportation that we need to be aware of, just kind of opened our eyes to be a little more careful. So we're also asking you to do that with our walk and bike safety information that I'll be putting out this week from SEMCOG. I have an update on the, a number of pounds that the friends of the Detroit River collected. I don't know if anyone wants to guess, or I think I already posted it, though. Any guesses? No cheating. Okay. Eight hundred eighty-one pounds of trash coming from the Detroit River, so you're awfully close, but not quite. You can join us next year to see that huge pile of trash that's out there. What's interesting is that the most number of pounds came from the Meyer Elias Park, which that is a park I go to every single day and I pick up stuff every day, so I can't imagine why we'd have so much. So note to people who are fishing back there. There is a little inlet that people like to go walk around and that is where they got a lot of the stuff that was left behind from people who traverse back there on their walks or if they're fishing. So please fishermen, I know it's, you know, you're all out, it's the season, so please clean up after yourselves and, you know, get all those things put away and your food and your lures or whatever. Take them back with you and we have receptacles at Meyer Elias Park for you to put them in, so please be careful about that. I'd like to invite you to my home for the Citywide Garage Sale coming up this weekend. I'm just plugging myself in this, but, you know, please, that's a great way to recycle is to, you know, buy each other's junk and, you know, something that you can find useful, I'm sure. But more importantly, at this Citywide Garage Sale, we also have the Cultural Center who is doing a fundraiser. They're selling items to support the Cultural Center and the MacArthur Park Gardens, so that's a good cause there, so please get out. We have businesses, small businesses downtown that are doing several Mother's Day events. And also, Mr. Mayor also mentioned the farmer's market, so, you know, there's a lot going on in town. Look at this list of things that I have. We also were on a call with the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. Tim Beaker is doing a great job of keeping us in line with how Rotary Park is going to roll out and all the phases. And this is a group that is trying to give us sources of, you know, grant income to be able to do this. And so they're going to have some kind of, what do we call it? Something we can walk away with, a list of grants that we can apply for, deliverable, I think they call it. They're going to give us deliverables for maybe how we can attack some of the work that needs to be done there. They're very excited about the project. Tim Knutson is, you know, also working with Tim Beaker on, you know, coming up with cost estimates and how we're going to get this done. It's a really great project overall, it looks really great. And then the last thing I have, Nelson would be so proud of me for talking, taking all his time today, maybe. The last thing I have is that there is a CAG meeting on May 11th at 6:30. This is via Zoom. I'll be posting that link shortly as soon as I get it. It's going to be an interesting one, so please join us to find out what is actually going to start happening there at the site as far as remedial investigations and some other things that have been going on, on the northern portion as well. So I think I have everything. Oh, sorry, one last thing. For the Tour de Tom, we are still looking for business involvement, so if you have anything for the swag bags or if you want to make donations for food, you know, snacks for the people who are riding. I sent out as many notices as I could. I haven't heard back from everybody, so if you'd like to be part of that, we're trying to get people to stay in Trenton when the bike ride is over and we want to support your small business, so please reach out if you have anything for our swag bags or advertisements. And we also had a Zoom with a bike rental company. Unfortunately, we are in need of $22,000 to provide 10 bikes, very similar to the Bird idea. These would be bike rentals where, but you would rent the bike and dock the bike at stations. So this wouldn't, they wouldn't be left all over town kind of thing. So a little bit different, but we're looking for a sponsor. So if anyone's listening out there, if there's a corporate sponsor, we're going to need to start working on that. Not sure we can bring that to residents this year, but it, for 10 bikes at a time, we're looking at 22,000 minimum. It's 2,200 per bike, so find a way to reach out and see if the community is interested and maybe the region is interested in getting some bike rentals so that we can provide for a healthy Downriver and use the trails. And, believe it or not, that is all I have for, oh. Nope. So close. So close. Yeah, so I just want, I brought my program from the City Award Banquet. So congratulations to Officer Evan McLeod, Police Officer of the Year. Blake Rusnak, Trenton Community Relations Officer of the Year. Jacob Hermanson, Firefighter of the Year. Rick Tanguay, Matt Dubois, who are from the Sports Hall of Fame induction. Really great neighbors. Steve and Pat Kajala, who went above and beyond when the ice storm happened to help their neighbors. Bill O'Neil. Hopefully he's feeling better. Hopefully the family can provide us an update on him. Also, Good Neighbor of the Year. Mark Angelotti, Outstanding Man of the Year. Heather Lear, Outstanding Woman of the Year. And Paul Haley, our surprise exemplary service award. Your daughter is hopefully not in too much trouble, but she absolutely loves you and we thank you for everything you do for us, so. Okay, I am done for tonight, yes.
You forgot one.
No, that's okay.
Councilwoman Pate, for those watching, was named Trentonite of the Year as well, so, yes, congratulations.
Thank you so much. And I also want to say, thank you for the police department. I did make a statement on my Facebook page. I am a teacher, retired now, thankfully, but I am a teacher who was in a real lockdown for 45 minutes with a real fatality at our school. And I just want to let kids know that you know what you're doing and please stop. It is not, it's, the resources that had to be expended, the fear that you put in my heart and all the children's hearts, just think about that before you do what you think is funny or silly. It's not, it's real. If you want to talk to me about my experience, if you need me to come with you on a run and talk to the kids about what that felt like, I'd be more than happy to. But on a somber note, just, you know, please, my son has three weeks left of high school and I'd like him to, I'd like him to finish and, you know, finish proudly and safely and happily, so. Hopefully this is over and we've learned from it and we'll do that. We'll move on and we'll have a great graduation. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Last but certainly not least here, Councilman Kebawattan.
Yes, thank you.
I saved some time for you.
Thank you. You know, you know, I'd like to say a lot of what everybody's repeated here tonight. Congratulations to all those that were at the Civic Awards and were honored. You know, thank you. It's one of the things that, it's because of you that makes our.
Objection!
Okay, don't know what that is.
I think you were fine.
Was there anything to object about? But okay, so. That's odd. So I, thank you for all of you that were, were there. And put, put the event on, Tim, your team that puts the event on, the Civic Commission as well, that puts that event on. They always do a great job in, in doing, that's a great event to be at. Wanted to thank our friends from Wayne Metro for tonight, tonight, for stopping by. You know, I learned a couple of things of some programs that they provide and that's, you know, very beneficial to the, to the community, to all the 43 communities in Wayne County, so great, great job. Thank you for that. I'd like to also thank Aaron Castle from the Planning Commission, the chairperson, for his commitment to over, I think he had six years in, in the Planning Commission. And I appreciate Aaron, he brought a lot to the table. His experience, the way he handled things and just how he tactically looked at a situation and would.
Sir, I said objection.
Yeah, that's not how that works. Police continues to act.
Yeah, sure. So obviously we're being Zoom bombed.
Sir!
Yep, okay, we're going to just.
Bye. So anyways, I want to thank Aaron for all of his, all of his efforts to the, to the Planning Commission. Also, again, thank you to, you know, police department, Mike, Jake, all of your people for all the efforts that you put out on a daily basis, but especially this last, you know, week has been a challenging one. It's one of those things you train for. You hope you never have to go through and, you know, your training paid off. We were, you know, you folks, you know, took care of things swiftly and tactfully, so as always. So thank you, thank you to your team. So that's all I have for tonight, Mayor. Nothing else to object to.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, I think we got that resolved too. So we will go to our other elected officials here. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
I'd like to just mention that our next meeting is Monday, May 15th. We will have a public hearing at 6:30 PM and that is for public comment regarding the proposed budget. And our regular meeting will follow at 7:00 PM.
All right, thank you very much and congratulations again as well, too, so.
Oh, thank you.
Of course. All right, from our assessor, do we have anything? I don't know if, Joan is here? Not here? What about treasure? Mr. McCullough? Don't see him on either, actually. All right, nothing from Treasurer's office? Cool. All right, we will go to our department heads now. Do any of our department heads have anything for us, so? All yours, Chief.
Evening, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you all for the kind words. We appreciate it. It was difficult, those couple days, but just like you all said, our people did what they had to do. And they handled it quickly and they did a great job. Next up, I'll try to keep this short because I know you're all anxious to get to your study session. But you all know that I'm retiring in the very near future. Tonight's my last council meeting as your police chief. So there's a few people I just wanted to thank. First of all, the mayor and Dean. When you appointed me to this position a year and a half ago and put your confidence in me to run the department, I can't tell you what that means to me. I really appreciate it. You gave me the opportunity to, to lead our department. I treasure that very much, so. To the rest of you, I appreciate the jobs you all do on council. The interest you take, you know, when there's, when I've had an item on the agenda and you do your research and quite often you've called to get some more information, sometimes at dinnertime the night of the council meeting, but that's okay too. I appreciate you all putting the effort in to learn more about what we do and what we need and that kind of thing. And greatly appreciate all the support very much. All the other department heads, I won't name everybody individually, but it's been really a pleasure working together. Some, some have been extremely helpful to me. I had a lot to learn when I took over this job. I mean, frankly, I still do, but many of the department heads have been very helpful in educating me on certain things and I appreciate that. Deputy Chief Davis, you know, at the same time I took over as chief, he came up as deputy chief and we've worked together on everything. And I think we've, we've been able to, to implement some, some positive changes in the police department. And I appreciate all the, all the hard work. And to our people in the police department, I can't tell you enough and I know, I know you all know a lot of our people. But until you're with them every single day, you, you honestly just can't get a real good feeling for the kind of work they do day in and day out. And they're just, they're just outstanding people and they go out and do a great job every single day. And I know they're appreciated, but you all know, we can't tell them enough. They just do a great job and I appreciate the job they do every day. Most importantly, my wife who's sitting right there. I don't know how many of you know, I know the mayor remembers, but a year ago she was named the Outstanding Woman of the Year in the city of Trenton. Well, she's been an outstanding woman to me for 28 years. She's always been right there at my side, supporting me in everything I've done. And I know it wasn't easy. You know, when I started in this job, we worked a swing shift, so I'm sure her and the kids quite often didn't know if I was coming or going. I mean, quite often I didn't know myself, but she was always there keeping everything squared away at home. And again, she supported me every step of the way, everything. You know, I was very lucky to try some different, different assignments throughout my career and she was always there, very supportive, doing everything she could to support me throughout my career. So thank you. Again, thank you all very much. It's, it's, it's been truly a pleasure working in this town. A very, very supportive community. Our residents have been so good to us and it's just been a great pleasure. So thank you again.
I didn't want to beat you to it, Chief. I didn't want to beat you to it, Chief, earlier, but I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. This, you know, almost two years now, it's frankly been easy because of you and the work that you've done there. We've been able to have the utmost confidence in you in every step of the way and know that, you know, we're all taken care of because of it. So, I'll save, save the whole spiel when we drag you back here to give you a plaque and all that good stuff, but we definitely appreciate it. 28 years is no small feat to do anything, and certainly a bright, bright future ahead still for you guys, so thank you very much for everything. We appreciate that. Any of our other department heads want to try and top that? Yeah, no, yeah, no retirements allowed, but other than that. All right, not seeing any others, we will go to public comment here now that this is the time.
Objection!
What is, okay, this is the same thing going on there. That's just going to be. All right, we've been our official Zoom bomb, and they're just joining in by different names in the waiting room. Cool. So, if anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comment to five minutes. We'll go to anyone in person first, and then go to those on the Zoom. If anyone wishing to speak on the Zoom, maybe, could please use the raise hand feature under either reactions or participants, and we'll get you queued up in there. So, we'll get started with those in person first, so Mr. Mills, feel free to take it away.
Lawrence Mills, 1940 Riverside Drive. I have three things on my list. First of all, what's going on with the hospital?
Sure. Dean, you want to get started on that?
So, tomorrow, they're supposed to be working on de-watering, the beginning of the de-watering of the site where they're going to pump the hole out, and then it's going to have to be filled and compacted, and then after that, the bladder that's in place should be able to be removed sometime shortly after that so that the site can start to de-water naturally on its own. And then the plan is currently that the basement will be pumped, but they're going to pump the wa, basically all the water off the site and frac truck it off-site.
There's obviously been some unforeseen events since the building isn't down, which I expected it would be down by now. Who's paying for the unforeseen events?
I can't, yeah, the, the short answer is NABA management is responsible for all, is responsible for the funding of anything above the monies that, that are out there that are in, in the project, and I really can't say much else about it because there's some things going on over the next week or 10 days that we'll probably get some information out on, but, because of litigation, it's a little difficult.
Second thing on my list, is there a date for the removal of the abandoned railroad tracks on King Road west of Jefferson?
No, I've reached out to DTE, and I haven't heard back. Their initial plan was April, but that's come and gone, so I don't have an updated timeframe for that, but it, it is in the process, and then they also have to do permitting through Wayne County, because they have to repair the road when they pull it, but it's, it's on their agenda.
Wonderful. Glad to hear it. The third thing is, I couldn't tell, has the, how the streetlights, the signals on West Road, have they been re-timed between Jefferson and Allen Road?
I have, I have no idea.
No. I think, we know that we had, it says the traffic flow was, I think, what we had heard before, was it was done by design. I cannot recall, actually, when the last conversation was with them, but to, in short, no, at least, nothing that I'm aware of where they've done anything about it, so.
They should have speed bumps, you know.
Speed bumps, no. I was on West Road again for the first time in a long time and hit many of the red lights along the way, again. I don't think I hit nine like the last time I was up here complaining about it, but-
Yep, no, it's my, I traverse that route every day unfortunately, and I've, I've spent some time at each and every one of those intersections, but no, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, oh, thank you very much, Mr. Mills, appreciate that. So, hopefully, yeah, have better news related to a couple of those things coming up soon here, so. Anyone else wishing to speak? Don't have any hands on the Zoom except another random number in the waiting room, so. Other than that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment at 8:00 PM, seeing no further discussions unanimously, so ordered. Yeah. See y'all in two weeks.